Let's go ahead and get started.
Just joining the pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands alone, one nation, on God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to just start off this meeting very briefly and ask if people would just remember Rick Smart, who was a member of our community who passed away recently. He did serve on our school board in Reed Field, was a fairly engaged citizen. Life took him way too young. I went to his celebration of life on Saturday, and it was very wonderful. So if we could have a moment of silence in memory of Rick Smart, I'd appreciate that. So, thank you. So, welcome to the Select Board meeting for October 7, 2019. We'll start off with the minutes of September 9, 2019. Could I have a motion in regards to minutes?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second? There's a motion and a second to approve. I think normally you abstain if you weren't there, but I actually watched the entire meeting, so I'm gonna vote.
You were there virtually.
Yeah.
Virtually there.
So, all in favor? Thank you. We'll go on to warrants. Eleven, twelve, and thirteen were Catherine, correct? And fourteen and fifteen, Ralph, you started with those, right?
I did the one on September 30th.
Yep. Okay. Well, let me go ahead and get started. So, I'll just start with warrant, which was a special warrant for H.E. Callahan Construction, and it was in the amount of eighty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. I'm filling in for Catherine. She's excused tonight, so if I have a question, I may have to do a little quick research. But Eric, can you just very briefly say what the eighty-six thousand dollars covered?
Sure. That's for work completed to date for the Marinacook Lake Outlet Dam. And that covered two months' worth of billing, August and September. And we had actually been late on that August payment. It just got put slip of the cracks, and so we wanted to make that right and also get them paid for September promptly as well, so.
Okay. And so, in keeping with that, I'll go ahead and move that we approve warrant eighty, excuse me, warrant eleven, in the amount of eighty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
You get to determine who said that, right?
You figure that one out, Chris.
I have to take turns.
But in any case, is there any discussion, questions, information regarding that? All in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to warrants twelve and thirteen together. And twelve and thirteen together are eerily the same, pretty close. I was actually confused.
Yeah.
They're eighty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Warrant twelve, okay, which was sixty-eight thousand dollars of it, were for accounts payable. A couple of items that kind of, just to clarify, Gerigo Architectural Engineering was nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and two cents, and that was for the fire station and library project. We also had some electrical work done for thirteen hundred at the transfer station, and my understanding is that check is, has not been mailed yet because we're just getting some completion of paperwork on that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you see Walnut Printing Specialties for four hundred and twenty dollars. That's a small item, but what is that? That's for transfer station tax.
May I ask a question about the Town of Winthrop payment in thirteen thousand, one nineteen? Is that related to the Marinacook Dam as well?
No, that would be for dispatching.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I didn't know. Appreciate it.
Dispatching or ambulance, I'd have to look at the account number.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
Okay. And then we had two payments also included of state fees, one for six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-four cents, and one for two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-three cents. State fees are just for like automobile registrations, snowmobile, dogs, whatever. No, not dogs, right? Did they get a buck off of that? Probably. Doesn't matter. And then there was a payroll of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents, making that total of eighty-six, six, five, six, and fifteen cents, which I enter into a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to approve eighty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents for warrants twelve and thirteen. Any discussion, questions?
That was for the ambulance service, I checked.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any, anything else? All in favor? Thank you. Ralph, it's your show now.
Whoopie. All right. So we're talking about warrant fourteen. The big issues are the three hundred and nine thousand and change for the school district and ninety-six K plus for the paving project, which is now complete. I think everyone's happy with it.
That's South Road?
Yep.
South Road and the apron loose. Yep.
I don't think there's anything else out there that looks out of the ordinary in terms of need for an explanation. Those were the big ticket items. You take them away, and it's pretty much a business-as-usual month. So I would move approval of warrant fourteen in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, six ninety-one, seventy-eight.
I second that.
And I'll just do a clarification on the motion, that it's really for fourteen and fifteen, because fifteen is the payroll piece of that.
Fifteen proves payroll as well.
And I'll tell you the payroll piece is fourteen, four, seventeen, fifty-one. So with that additional explanation, we have a motion on the floor. Is there, are there any questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We've approved warrants. We'll go on to Select Board Communications. Welcome, everybody.
Hey.
Does anybody have anything to say?
Yes, as always. I just want to say that I am the, I have been the web Facebook manager of the Town of Reed Field's Facebook page, and it's a really great resource. And I just want to lead people to that, if you're watching, if you are listening, whatever you are doing. The Facebook page has a lot of good information about what's going on, heads up, information. We have our website. We are trying to be as transparent and communicate as much stuff as possible. So, just as a heads up, if you have any information, if you haven't liked it, or if you do the Facebooking, check us out on Facebook. You know, we enjoy that. It's one of the ways that we are able to get information out there. One of the things that I'd like to say is that there's always ways of getting information to us. Sometimes Facebook is screaming into the abyss, and the abyss is screaming right back, so to speak, to borrow from Nietzsche. So, my point is, if there, you know, the Facebook way is a really great way for us to give information. If you have questions about a road issue, if you have questions about something going on in your neighborhood, something you think that the town can help, if Eric can be a part of that, please by all means get in touch with the town. The Facebook page really isn't, as we know, Facebook isn't necessarily the most effective way of sort of having a dialogue. And so, we would much prefer it if you call. Eric's pretty unassuming. He's not too bad on the phone, so just as a way of saying, you know, we want information to work both ways, and that's how we're doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a couple things.
Please.
Bruce and I went to the KV Cog Annual Meeting last week, and we came away with the impression that maybe we should use them more, that they're our avenues that we could put to use. They had the Commissioner Heather Johnson, and she discussed economic development, and she has ideas where it doesn't, it can start in one town and flow to the next town, so that one town isn't getting all the development. And they have a program that they do with TRC, where they'll come in and assess a property, do the assessment, KV Cog, and then this TRC will get grant money and say the land needs to be cleaned, it's toxic or something. So there's a lot of things that the Reed Field Enterprise Fund should look into. And Darcie Whittamore called me today. She noticed last year for trunk and tree that there were a lot of kids walking around without any reflective clothing on. So she's getting two hundred slap bands to be given out at the library and at the Union Meeting House where we're having the trunk and tree. She works for Bike Coalition of Maine and Safety for Pedestrians and Bikers, and so she can get these from the DOT, she said.
Please.
And so the parents can pick those up at the library or the Union Meeting House.
At the trunk and tree, right?
Yeah. We need more trunks, if anybody wants to be a trunk.
Do you want to explain briefly what a trunk is?
Well, it's trunk and tree.
Yep.
If you bring your car to the Union Meeting House and open up your trunk and decorate it for Halloween and hand out candy. We had over two hundred children last year.
Good opportunity to get rid of that little spare tire that you don't want.
I've been on the treadmill.
I didn't mean that.
Oh, okay, sir.
Anybody else? Ralph? Then I'll just conclude with a reminder to vote in November on Election Day. There isn't a town election, there isn't a school board election, but there is a state ballot question, I believe, or two.
Yes.
So polls will be open in regular hours in the whole nine yards, and if I'm correct, absentee ballots are now available.
They're now available.
For early voting.
And the day before, or actually, on Wednesday, before, we're gonna be open till seven to allow for voter registration and ballot turning in and all of that stuff, so I'll touch on that a little bit in my report.
Okay, great. And it's all yours.
All right. I'll start by saying that we have our assessing agent with us this evening for an item that's coming up later, so I'll ask if it's possible, if we could move that up at some point in the agenda to give Dave a chance to help us through that discussion, and then send him on his way back to...
On twenty, zero, twenty-nine?
Yeah, yes. That's right.
So if there's no objections from the board, I will be moving that up after staff reports.
All right. And I will go through my town manager's report. Still a little bit early for me to be having the full treasurer's report, so I'll, we'll save that. Maintenance and infrastructure, the paving work is complete, as noted earlier. I was very pleased with the results. I've had a lot of questions about why we paved South Road when other roads in town may have needed more work, more, seem to be in worse condition. And the short answer is that the South Road is one of the, if not the, heaviest-traveled town road in Reed Field. Route seventeen gets more, but that's a state road. North Road probably gets a little bit more, but that's also a state road. So, South Road gets a lot of traffic, and one of the most important things we can do is to make sure that we keep our roads that are in decent condition in peak condition, if at all possible. So, there's a bell curve. We're at, just getting over the top of that. We had some transverse cracking. We wanted to take care of that and make sure that was in pristine condition for as long as possible. Also, that road had been rebuilt, and we had some rutting that wasn't necessarily visible unless you drove on it when it was raining. And so now, we've taken care of that issue as well. So it might have looked like it was in good condition, but it did have some issues that weren't quite evident. And the loose road apron, I've had only positive feedback about that so far. That might change when people go off of it into the mud this fall and spring, but for now, people seem to be happy to have a landing area to get onto and off of seventeen. Crack sealing is about two-thirds complete. The company had left. They weren't quite done, but they did say they would be coming back to finish that work for us, weather-dependent. So I'm optimistic, but not, certainly not positive that they'll be back to finish that for us this fall. Work on the Marinacook Lake Dam is moving along very well. We should be finished with most of the major work that's either in or adjacent to the water by the end of October, anything that would affect permitting. And then after that, we might have some work with the gatehouse, but we'll be wrapped up with that project, I'd say, in its entirety by the end of November, which is great.
And Eric, we will see the results of this dam installation in the spring, when we have to do the most of the regulation of the water level.
Absolutely, yeah. And hopefully, people won't even notice it, because the water will just stay right about where it's supposed to.
Awesome.
You know, it is the flooding that we can control, and we shouldn't have that anymore.
Thank you, sir.
Fall roadside mowing on town properties is nearly complete, so we do hit all the roads, and we hit all the town properties every fall and every spring, and that's turned out to be a pretty good cycle for us. So I'm happy to see that moving ahead with some regularity. Brush clearing, culvert clearing, and leaf cleanup are all underway. Those are standard fall activities for us. Trimming along Route seventeen sidewalk, that was completed last week, and we did send out letters to abutting property owners, which was, I think, very well-received and helped people understand what was going on. And actually, we got some feedback and some requests for work, some of which we could do, some of which we couldn't. But that was a good outreach tool, so I'm pleased with how that came together. The road committee has recommended that we look at alternatives to just repair of the salt sand building, given the high cost of the bid. We're still not certain that's a reliable number. We only had one bid come in, but if it's anything close to a real number, we should be concerned and looking at the possibility of a full replacement, as opposed to just a repair, given the cost per year over, you know, adding twenty years with a little bit of uncertainty, or adding fifty with a stable life expectancy. So I just wanted to report that. The winter salt sand is being loaded and stockpiled, and we have the truck inspections happening on October fifteenth, that's next Tuesday. And we do that every year to make sure that we have the equipment in place and functional and ready for the winter. We've had a couple frosts, and I think we're gonna have a little bit of a break, but it's not far off here. The Select Board recommended that we look at interim, or internal work, as opposed to external work, following the bid results for accessibility improvements to the town office. I did find with a couple of quotes, and we're gonna try to get one more, that we can make pretty big improvements with the addition of door openers. They're not cheap for all three doors, the one on the front, one on the inside, and then one on the second floor on the inside. We're looking at a range of eight to twelve thousand dollars, depending, but that really does address a huge part of the accessibility issue that we have with the building. So I'll be bringing some more information on that back, probably in November, and hoping we can pick someone to do the work for us.
Does that, excuse me, open us up to complaints or issues in terms of full ADA compliance? Once you touch something, you have to go through and deal with everything?
I don't believe so, because what we have is, we have the access to the building, and then we have the access inside the building. Doing the work inside the building is, I guess, separate from the work outside. So if we did the parking lot, we wouldn't necessarily have to do the interior doors. But this is all part of that same puzzle, and any improvement is pretty favorably looked upon. And the biggest complaints we get are, "Well, I can't open the door," or "Someone has to open the door for me." And for anybody, whether it's someone in a wheelchair, or old residents, or younger residents, people carrying things upstairs for an event, those can make a big difference. So what we were looking at outside was moving a grade that's at perhaps five percent down to three percent, and that while it's a code-related change, wouldn't really have the same positive impact as having those door openers. So at this point, I think it's probably a good direction for us to head. I will look into that question more, though, just because it's a good one. My understanding is that those are separate issues, inside and outside, related to parking as opposed to the interior accessibility, so. But I'll make a note to look into that. Okay. Transfer station. The revised operations manual is on the agenda for tonight, for the Select Board to look at. That is the most recent draft. It has a lot of input from the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, and also input from staff and my review as well. So this is basically the final draft that you're looking at. Once that's voted on and hopefully approved, the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee will do the same. And the reason it's been brought to the Select Board is because we do have an ordinance that says operational rules will be approved by the Select Board. Otherwise, I'd really just leave it to the Solid Waste Committee, but I think it's a good way to get the word out that we are updating, and I'll talk more about that later in the meeting. The new attendant booth is on site, and we're getting a lot of questions, which is great. We're also in the process of reviewing the operations manual. Whenever an issue comes up, the answer usually is, "Well, that will be resolved when we get the attendant booth up and running." People dropping things off where they're not supposed to, people not paying, confusion about where to go, people walking across and clogging up the access paths and the driving areas. A lot of these things, I think, are gonna be improved by that building. It will be functional when two things happen, when we finish the interior work, which would include electrical lighting and heat, as well as air conditioning in the summer months. And the other piece is public education. Right now, staff are doing a good job talking to folks, but we will be developing a brochure, and about two weeks before that goes online, everybody going into that station will be receiving an informational brochure to talk about what it is, why it's there, and how it's gonna help, and how to be a part of the solution to some of these issues that we do have by utilizing that building. So that's about it for physical improvements, other than to say that we've moved some of the waste areas at the north end of the facility. I'm talking about brush, white goods, propane. A lot of those things have been moved aside to make better access safety and winter maintenance to improve those areas. So we've had some good changes there. And also, I want to point out that we will be looking at bringing in an additional staff person at the transfer station within the next couple of weeks, so I want people to be aware of that. Moving on to administration and personnel, I did just talk about the transfer station briefly. We also have had a lot of training happening lately. Staff have been going to MMA convention, also training specific to their areas of job responsibility. Also, I'm really happy that our maintenance staff are attending leadership training this week to help them work with some of our seasonal staff. It's one of those things that you don't always think about, but it makes a difference for them when they're working with high school students, working with people that are maybe new to the job market, and also helping them work with me. So by understanding what I do, and having a little bit of that experience themselves, I think it's gonna be a good, positive investment for them. Moving on to my announcements, the town office will be closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day on October fourteenth, so that's not this, it's the Monday coming up. And we do have the absentee ballots available for the November fifth state referendum, and Deb wanted me to point out that at, on Wednesday, October thirtieth, the clerk's hours will be extended until seven PM, so that folks can register to vote and absentee vote. So if you have any questions, please call the town office, and Deb will be very able and capable and happy to answer your questions. That's my report for the evening.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all of that information. It was also a written report from the Code Enforcement Office officer for the summer of 2019, and I trust everyone had an opportunity to read that.
Thank you.
We will now take twenty, zero, twenty-nine, which is to consider nullifying an improperly-assessed 2012 supplemental tax for account six ninety. Eric, I'm gonna turn that over to you and our assessor, and the Board of Assessors is here as well.
Yes, thank you. So I'll just start by saying that we did have an assessment for the Lions Club of Reed Field that was improperly assessed. As a nonprofit organization, they should not have been assessed. Also, they became insolvent and actually disbanded not long, either before or after this assessment took place. So a couple of issues there. And what I'd like to do is just get this off the books and rely on some state statute relating to uncollectibility. And that allows us, for anything more than two years old that we don't believe to be collectible, to be abated essentially by the Select Board, as opposed to just the Board of Assessors. So I'm happy to take any questions on that, but this is, I'd say, really more or less a housekeeping item. We did not initiate a lien process. We didn't take any action. So this really is just a hanger-on. And so, following any questions, I would appreciate a motion to abate that full supplemental assessment that was put in place, and I want to find that dollar value, if I can.
One thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents?
All right, Ralph Scott, what was that again?
One thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay. All right, great.
That was back in 2012.
2012, yeah. So it's been on the books for a very long time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and David is here as well, if you have any more technical questions.
I have a question on the supplemental tax due twelve hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents. Does that include interest charges that were also added, or is this just...
This is a moment in time. Again, this was not processed in any way.
Oh, I see.
It was a supplemental that was just assessed, and then no action was taken following it because of the, I guess, errors or confusion. A little bit of both.
So there's no, there's none?
Short answer is no, yes.
Okay, great. Are there other questions, Eric, or questions that David can't answer?
Here we go.
I just think we have to make it known that this should never have been assessed in the first place.
That's cool. May I also mention something as the...
Please.
These sorts of things, when we look through these and we sort of look at them, the biggest, to me, as a member of the Board of Assessors, is what is the most, you know, common sense approach to something like this? And it seems like, you know, this is, it's really quality assurance, so that the records that we have, the precedents that we establish, all of our little, you know, the little minutia that sometimes drives us crazy or we roll our eyes at, this is exactly why David is so good. So these are things, I think, that it's important that we're always looking to correct things or at least look at ways that we can make our records and assessments more efficient.
More efficient, and if I might add, equitable.
Agreed.
That's why I don't think there's a window in terms of timeline for when we would stop or where we would stop reviewing our records to make sure that past, present, future, we are being as fair as possible to the people that are paying tax bills in the Town of Reed Field.
Good. With those comments, could I take a motion on this? Does anybody want to answer a motion? I will, if no one else does.
I move that we forgive, is that the word?
Abate.
Abate.
We're gonna abate the supplemental tax bill from 2012 for one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents.
And the account number for record is six ninety.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? I know sometimes we have discussion and questions before motions, and that's fine because they're informational, but once we actually have the wording in the motion, this is just my little educational piece for tonight. Once we have the motion, then you are talking specific to the motion, it's sitting on the table of the floor or whatever. So seeing no further questions or discussion, all in favor. Thank you.
Before we move on, I do want to just pass along a supplemental assessment that was approved at the Assessors' meeting just prior to this. David had made a small correction, and so I'm asking the assessors to sign this while they're here. they're here.
And we can move on to the next item.
Thank you, David. We will now move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the Trails Committee for their minutes of May 28, 2019, the Covesy Watershed District minutes of June 11, 2019, the Library Board of Trustees minutes of July 10, 2019, and the Cemetery Committee minutes of August 21, 2019. The town's always active year-round during the summer and so forth. So thank you for submission of that information and having them in the, given to the public. We'll move on to public communication. Are there any members of the public here that wish to address the select board? Please go to, right up to the podium, sir. And just give your name and, great. Mr. Urb, right?
Yeah, David Urb.
Right, David Urb.
Yes, nice to see you all here, and Eric, you're doing a really great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate your report. I just wanted to, I understand that we, that you review the reports of the committees, and I see the Trails Committee there, and I was walking behind my house. This is just sort of an observation that I have, but I see that there's a new trail that's going from the ball field directly forward of the ball field into the woods. Are you all familiar with that, that trail?
Yes.
Okay. So I noticed that it goes, and I'm not actually here to complain about it or anything, but I have some observations about it. I think, I'm not aware of it, and I don't know, I think I'm in a butter of that, and I know Chris Olson, my neighbor, is in a butter of that trail, that new trail. So when I went out there the other day, it was a surprise to me that it looks like a project. It looks like a project that's happening, and the trail goes inward from the ball field into the woods and then goes towards Chris Olson's property. And we have to remember, this is a woman who was the only person, this residence was the only residence that had opposition to the ball field because of the proximity to her house. And she was worried about the lights and potential noise and all that. At the end of it, she was okay with it. She was okay with it, and she conceded to say, okay, we'll do the ball field. Now I see this trail as going within 100 feet of her property, and it ends in sort of like a cul-de-sac kind of fashion. I assume that it's in a green state and it's maybe going to have gravel, or it's going to be improved, or I'm not exactly sure what the project actually is. But by looking at it, I would recommend that that goes through and around and comes out somewhere else, because if it goes to a dead end, or if there's any kind of an end, there's going to be a problem. I think that we're going to see a lot of young people, and here's the person, and that residence also had her property robbed. Her house was robbed by young people from the high school that had sort of staked her out, and then eventually, when she was out of there, they went in there and stole a bunch of stuff, and then they were recovered, you know, and it was, it was just, you guys might remember that if you think back. So here, again, here we are. I think that it's a bit of an imposition to the butters. I'm not sure, I wasn't notified, maybe I was, but I don't think I was. Maybe she was, but I think we should take a look at that and review if we are going to put some sort of activity in there, like a park or a place to sit and observe the old grandstands and look at the old granite blocks. It's really an interesting area right now, very historic, but it should go through and should come out somewhere so that people don't go down there and hang out. So that's the only observation that I have, because anywhere else on any of the trails, and the trails are beautiful, and I really love and appreciate that they're there, but people don't hang out on a trail because they know somebody's going to come along. They don't build a campfire in the middle of a trail. And I would think that in this area where it goes in and ends like that, at least what I see, I wouldn't want people to just go down there and hang out. So that's what I see. And I do hear people now down there. I don't know if they're working down there, I don't know what's going on down there. I've seen kids with their bikes go down there. So, I mean, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, David.
Yep, that's the only reason I can do it.
Since we have the Trails Committee here for another item on the agenda.
Yeah.
If somebody would like to speak to that.
I think I can address this.
Yep, and I appreciate it, thank you very much.
I believe the Conservation Commission was doing it.
Bob, you're going to have to go to the microphone.
Yeah, you guys go ahead.
If I got to be on TV, you got to be on TV.
Yeah, I believe that it's a, I'm Bob Harris, and I'm on the historical committee there, or whatever it is, and I'm on the Trails Committee. And I believe that it's the Conservation Committee that's doing that. And they just want accent pulling stones that have been there where the old grandstands were and stuff, and that's quite historical. It is very, and rather than having a trail that goes in and just through, they thought they would just put the trail right to where the pulling stones were so people could see what it was like back 100 years ago, and it would be more of a historical thing than anything else. We didn't mean to, I'm sure that nobody meant to cause any harm or get anybody upset over this.
I don't even know if Chris knows about it, Chris Olson. I don't even know if she's even aware of that project. And I see that it is a trail, right? So it's been blazed, and there's been more than one trail. There's been about three or four loops in there that have come around.
Yeah, because the old track, the old horse racing track.
Well, that's where the, that's where the stones are. That's where they're described, right? I mean, the stones have been moved.
The stones are there, yeah. And then the track is a half-mile track.
Oh, I know, I know. I know exactly where it used to go. Very interesting.
It is. And we were just going to kind of accent the track.
But the, that, yeah, I think that's really cool, actually, but the stones are accenting where the track was, but the trail is a trail that goes into the woods there and just kind of stops. And it's not far from Chris's house, the trail where it ends, and it's nice. I see that people move some stones in there. So it's kind of a place where you can go into the woods and it just kind of stops there. It seems to me like it would make sense to just kind of have it continue somehow to go back.
Loop around?
Loop around if you come, well, it loops in a very small loop and comes back onto its own self, onto its own trail, but it doesn't, it ends. It goes in and it ends. So a loop is about as big as this, as this space right here, loops that we're looking at, is this like right here, so it's.
Thank you. I just want to ask you a question because I'm looking at it from above. If we are talking, if we're in the parking lot at the fairgrounds, we're talking about that area, right? The fairground where the baseball field is?
Yes.
Where exactly are we talking, are we talking about towards?
To the home plate, the home plate.
Gotcha, okay.
Go behind the home plate.
I gotcha.
And go straight into the woods. Now, I think that if, when I say straight into the woods, it would be.
It's pretty close to straight.
Continue from the parking lot, straight past home plate, all the way to the end.
Gotcha. It's at that first junction.
Okay.
Because I walked the other day and saw it as well.
I mean, I actually really like it. I'm just thinking, how can we?
And we're going to, we're going to put signage up in front, explain what it all is and all that stuff. It's going to be really nice.
Oh, I think it would be great. How do you avoid people, no, it's not causing a problem, I'm just making an observation. How do you avoid people from hanging out down there? Because you're going to hold down there. I mean, if you go through there, I mean, it could be, I see somebody pitch a tent in there one of these days. I'm not going to move down there when they ask.
Please give us a call.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, call Eric.
People are living in there or something, because it's.
On the trail, you can almost, you can almost see it on the trail. As you're walking, you can see into it, and you see if there's good things around there.
Right, and that's the exact point I'm making, is if you see people like hanging around down there, you're not going to walk down there. You're not going to walk down there. If people are like kind of sitting in a circle and hanging around, who knows what they're doing? I mean, people, but if it goes through and you know that people are always going to be walking through it, then I think there'd be less tendency for people to want to hang around in that spot like a campfire.
I guess we could connect it. Yeah, we could look at that.
Move it back towards my property, go on, and then go back onto the main trail if we do that. But I do think that anytime you have a place that is far removed from activity and you're going to make a place to go visit, it's a place that I think could invite people to hang out, you know, because it's in the woods.
Okay, I'm going to ask for the discussion to end.
Okay.
I'm glad you brought it up. I'm glad that we have members of the Trail Committee here. I'm going to make sure some communication happens with the Conservation Committee if they are indeed the builder and maintain.
They are.
Yeah, so we'll just make sure that there's, that it's just not dropped.
Yeah, I'm not against it.
Sure.
This is important things that you have to consider, like what's going to happen in the future with the place.
Absolutely. And so having that brief discussion in the public here allows us to say we've got something to follow up on.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And on, maybe the town of those means, I had just discovered the trail, so I'll.
Good night.
Who's hanging out there?
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the select board this evening? Greg.
Greg Durgen, just resident. Want to thank, had an incident last Thursday where I made a mistake. I'm not going to get into it in public, but I made a mistake in timing and so forth, and I needed some help from the town office. So I came up early and got here just as Ben was coming to work, and he was, went out of his way to help me. Ben Rodriguez, a town employee. And later on in the day, when we were working on a trail, not the aforementioned one, but the one behind the library, Anna Carl, another town employee, stopped by to make sure everything was okay, we needed anything, just checking, and I thought that was really nice. And then, I guess the last one I want to mention is the girl in the hood over here. I know she's cold. She's very agreeable and helpful when I come in. Sometimes I have to access the cellar here to get some material for trails, and she's always been gracious, no matter how busy she's been, getting me a key. She's also very willing to take my tax money every month, and I appreciate that. She has with a smile. That's all, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Durgen. Thank you, Derek. I'm Derek, I mean.
Great.
We'll move on now to 20-0-30, which is to consider automobile graveyard permit applications. And per, per the code office, we have basically a recommendation that these be approved, their renewals be approved, they're all renewals with the conditions as stated on their individual permits. And your packet were the individual permits, I believe. And I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the permits for Ken's Dragon Auto, Antique Auto, and Lucas Auto Parts and Salvage. And some of the owners, I believe, are here tonight. Thank you for coming. Are there any questions for them or for me on the motion? I need a second. I need a second.
I'll second it.
The code enforcement officer's report seems fairly comprehensive, and it looks like everyone's in compliance and doing what they should.
Yep. And we pay a lot of attention to some of the environmental factors, and he mentions that in his report, and I appreciate you being good stewards of that and working with us on environmental issues.
I would second that. We appreciate you doing the right thing, and we might, it might be inconvenient Monday night for you, but we appreciate you dotting all the i's and crossing the t's because I think that shows you care about it, so, thank you.
Anybody want to say anything? Pretty good. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please. You guys can stay for another hour.
And we're at it.
The good stuff's just about to start.
I hear the.
We'll approve the, we'll sign these and get these out, yeah.
It's just you, Bruce.
It's just me, huh?
But Travis did give his thanks and say that everybody's working very hard to keep their places up, so he appreciated that.
Great.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to. Wouldn't sure if that was a reprint. I don't mind taking 20-32 out of order as well. If, are you all here now for, yeah, for, is anybody else? I mean, we're a little bit behind time anyhow. So we'll go ahead and we'll proceed with 20-0-32, which is consider a proposal for trail work on the Morrel Road. And I'm going to turn it over to, are you speaking to it, Rob? Rob, why don't you go right up to the microphone, make yourself at home, and go ahead and give us a scoop.
I'm Rob Field, I'm a member of the Trails Committee, and I'm joined here by Greg Durgen and Bob Harris, who are also members. And what we are asking tonight is to find out if the select board will support our efforts to design a trail which will go along the old discontinued portion of the Morrel Road. And our objectives in doing this, we want to create a publicly accessible trail that will connect conservation lands, trail systems that are east and west of that old Morrel Road, and we want to do it safely and efficiently as possible. And we also want to improve the safety for people who are now utilizing Nickerson Hill Road, coming all the way down to Route 17, walking or biking along Route 17 until they get to the Mill Stream Road or perhaps even further east to go in and go to the schools or town office or wherever they may be going. So just, I'll bring up Exhibit 1, which is the map, just to give you the perspective on this, and the first page of our Walking Trails in Reedfield map, if you want to look at that.
Sure.
You see the green square in the middle that says Fairground Trails? Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, within that square, you can see the orange lines which represent the Fairgrounds Trail System. There's also another trail off the Church Road, which is the Community Trail, which connects the library up and goes around the Meeting House and up to the Church Road. We also have a sidewalk that partially connects all these trails that goes all the way over to Marana Cook Community School and then comes over to the town office. And a short distance from the town office, we have the Mill Stream Trail, which is that little short orange trail toward the west side. And from the Mill Stream, you'll see there's a little black road that goes out to Route 17. That's the Mill Stream Road. And if you look on the left side of that green box in the middle, you'll see a road that just sort of ends there without touching another road. That's the point at which the Morrel Road was discontinued back in 1985. So that little blank section is where we want to put our trail. And I'll also mention, while we're looking at this map, you can see the two blue trail systems to the west of the Morrel Road. One of them is in the Rose Marin Saunders Family Forest, and if you look at that trail system, there's about three miles' worth of trails represented by those blue lines. So that's a substantial trail system in and of itself, and I expect in the future we'll develop additional trails on that Rose Marin Saunders property. Also, looking over toward the town forest, we have the McDonald Woods and Town Forest Trail Systems. So as it is right now, we've got about 1,000 acres or so of conservation land west of the Morrel Road. There's another big chunk of land which the New England Forestry Foundation has been intermittently negotiating to take over. And we expect that when that happens, hopefully it's when and not if, there'll be an opportunity to connect both the Rose Marin and the town farm, McDonald Woods property with additional trail systems. So there's already about 1,000 acres of conservation land west of the Morrel Road. There's probably somewhere between 500 and 1,000 acres over around Marana Cook and the Fairgrounds to the east of the Morrel Road. So there's pretty large chunks of trail and conservation lands on either side of this road. If you want to look at the second exhibit, this hones in a little bit more, and you can see there's a red box that is around the discontinued section of the Morrel Road, and that is where we would like to put the connector trail. And what that will do, will take us from Route 17 over to the Morrel Road, which is a relatively lightly-used road, over to the Nickerson Hill Road. And people now are walking, biking along the Morrel Road, and the Nickerson Hill Road. There's a snowmobile trail that parallels that northern arm of the Nickerson Hill Road, crosses the Nickerson Hill Road just beyond. crosses the Nicholson Hill Road just beyond where the Morrel Road joins it, and then goes up into the Rosemarin property. So I don't have, that's another potential connection down the road, perhaps, depending on what private owners might decide to do in the future. So I think that provides the, the sort of geographic setting here for our request. And if you have questions at any time, you can interrupt me.
I have some questions. Go ahead. A couple of things. How long is the proposed connector from the end of the Morrel Road to the connection on Nicholson Hill Road? Or, excuse me, Sturdivant Hill Road?
Well, I've been using the figure of 300, but in looking at these various maps, it's probably somewhere between 300 and 500 feet.
Okay.
It's not very long.
Gotcha. And there is a property at the end of the Morrel Road. Is, is that anything, against the, who owns that land that that 3 to 500 is going to be on?
Well, that gets into the background, which I provided. So let me back up a little bit. At one point, that, what now is called the Morrel Road, connected all the way over to the Sturdivant Hill Road, just a few yards back from Route 17. And if you look at the old topo maps and stuff that show those original roads, it looks like, you know...
I'm looking at the Google. So yes, I can see you right there.
Well, is that, are you looking at a historic base map or the current?
No, I'm looking at it from above via the satellites in the air. This is very current.
Current one, yeah. So you can't really see the old road.
Yeah.
But if you look on the historic Google images, which you may or may not have access to on your version of Google...
Yeah.
Or on an old topo map, that road came down, and it looks like a real horror story.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely can see it. The, the grass here, I mean, it's easy to sort of extrapolate where the road has been here. So I see it right there. So really, it's sort of just, so it's not an ownership issue, it's just, it's a right-of-way that was there before, and we're improving it?
Yes. I should, I probably should have used the term "public easement." Because in actuality, what happened when the town officially discontinued that road section, under state law, the town still retained a public easement over that road.
Gotcha.
And there doesn't seem to be any question about that, from what I can see legally.
That's always...
But is that easement shared by the abutting property owners to the center line of the discontinued road?
I'm assuming the abutting property owners have some sort of...
Right to pass.
Parts of that bundle of rights. But the town retains the public easement. And basically, state, the state law that set this up, after 19, any road discontinued after 1965 would have this public easement that would continue unless the town somehow actively decided to get rid of it, I guess.
Gotcha.
There's no record that that happened here. And a few years ago, Milt Wright and I think Evelyn Potter did extensive research on the discontinued and abandoned town roads in Reedfield. And this section was identified as one of the ones where the town definitely did retain rights along the road, and was identified as something that we could potentially put a trail on.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Just because I'm, I'm curious about this process. In that, where the, where the old road sort of spits out onto Sturdivant Hill Road, just, it's just, is it just, is it going to be just sort of like a regular width trail? It's not going to be a giant thing, just like the road? Okay. I'm just looking at it. It's amazing, anyway, the Google images. But just a lot of electrical stuff there, I was looking at.
So there won't be trailhead parking on that side of the...
There's no plans for any parking as part of what we're doing.
Great.
It's just a connector.
Cool.
And I will say, well, there's, right now, you can see there are utility poles that go up what appears to me to be on the south side of that public easement.
That is correct.
And we, in, in looking at the old plans, old maps, this tax map, it looks to me like we may be able to bring our trail right down so we're just crossing Route 17. We wouldn't necessarily have to bring it out on the Sturdivant Hill Road.
I got you.
And I think it would make, be safer...
Safer, yeah.
And make more sense to go, come down and go directly across. But that's something we, as a committee, we need to go out there and look at it, make sure we all agree...
Great.
What the best way to do it is.
Okay. What, what, are you expecting that this will be a crushed rock kind of trail, or is this a path?
No. Well, I'm the guy that likes natural trails, okay? Now, I cannot promise you that other people on the Trails Committee won't decide that we need a nice bluestone path. So at this point, I guess what we're proposing is a relatively unimproved trail that people can walk up and bicycle up. We would try to make the trail a winding trail. We don't want something where a kid will get going on that, because there is a downward slope there. We don't want a kid coming down on his bike and going straight across the road, that type of thing. So we do want to look at all the safety aspects of it.
Yeah, and even if there is, within your committee, a group that would want a more improved trail, and there might be reasons for that, I don't know, I like the idea and of starting off as relatively unimproved, seeing what the traffic is and so forth, and then perhaps upgrading it as necessary due to traffic and so forth.
Right.
Or potential traffic, I should say, because if you build it, they'll come, I think.
We hope so.
I'm glad to hear that you're not having any parking adjacent to it, because it'd look, would look problematic in regards to that on either end, actually.
Yeah.
Have we talked with abutters?
Yes. Bob and I, we sent letters to both the abutters back in April, somewhere in there. And we gave them both our email addresses and phone numbers. We've gone up there a couple times, haven't found anybody home at either property, but we have not heard from either person that they have any objections or even want to have input into this at this point. Now that we're here and maybe getting started, maybe they'll want to come talk to us, I don't know.
So all you really need from us is just sort of a green light, please go ahead and explore this and go ahead and put in the, the path. That's what you're looking for tonight.
Yeah, we're looking for a green light to do the planning, you know, and come up, you know, if we need to spend any money, come up with a budget. It wouldn't be a bad thing if you want to, if you're comfortable with this and you want to give us permission to go out and actually lay in the trail and cut it, cut a trail, not complete the thing. But if we were to put our trail in, that would at least help the people who are now utilizing Nicholson Hill Road and Route 17. It might give them a better route to get back to Central Pirate Town, the community school, all that kind of thing. So I don't know if you're really ready to do that for us. It would be nice. It would, might save us coming back a month from now, I don't know.
I don't have any problems.
Love to save you a return trip, but I think it's very important that the abutters are informed. I, I don't understand why they're, why they're not responding, but obviously, public use is going to expand. I don't think it's going to be overly intrusive, but we should absolutely make sure that they are aware and that any input they may have is factored into how you design the trail.
Well, we can make another attempt, maybe go up and see if we can contact them...
Are these year-round residents? They're here all the time?
They both appear, I think, well, that's right.
They're permanent, they live in Reedfield permanently, but they go south.
Okay.
That's what we hear.
So your opportunity for catching up with them is running out.
Yeah, we haven't seen them all summer. They're going to camp somewhere else or whatever. We've talked to them a few times.
Yeah, they're retired. From my, my perspective, I would think that some level of input...
Yes, I have no problem, I mean, I have no problem saying, please move forward with this, but I don't know, Eric, can you defer, or Bruce, what do we, do we have to make a motion?
I, I forgot to say, these letters that we sent were by certified registered mail.
Okay, that's...
Return receipts. They both came back signed.
Yeah, okay.
They know about what we're doing.
Yeah, I think you've done your due diligence.
That's a pretty good indicator.
That was going to be my next suggestion, and we're all set. Yeah, so I'm ready to take a motion in regards to this, please.
I would like to make a motion to move forward and give, I guess, I don't know, the approval to the Trails Committee to move forward with the Morrel Road trail.
Second.
Okay. I, I would like, okay, is there any discussion? I would like that to be an understanding that it's a relatively unimproved trail initially. Is that the intent of the motion, or is it just why...
Uh, yes, I, I don't, I don't, is, should the motion reflect the intensity to which the trail...
I don't think it needs to, if we have a discussion.
Yeah.
Could I suggest that maybe the motion be amended to, to afford them what their request was, to allow a preliminary cut?
Yeah, that's exactly what we want to do.
Sure. So move forward with the Morrel Road trail.
So, yes, so, let's go ahead and formalize that by amending the motion. So you are doing that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to amend this Price's motion that this be for a preliminary cut for the Morrel Trail.
Which is a clarification of the motion, and I will second that. So we would vote on the amendment first. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor. Now we'll discuss the main motion, which is amended now. Is there any discussion in regards to that, please?
I just want to offer, Bob and Greg, if they want to add anything more to what's already been said.
Gentlemen?
Sure, just, it was after your vote, I just wanted to let you know that, too late to get it into the packet, but I just prepared a sheet of references for building a new trail in Reedfield. Comes from the Open Space Plan, Reedfield's Comprehensive Plan, and Reedfield Trails Committee Strategic Plan. If I can give it to Kristen, she can get copies out. I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Sure.
And the other thing I want to say is, Bob and Rob have done an exemplary job preparing this. They've been working on it for several months to get letters out and so forth. And I don't think the Trails Committee sees a big, not like the Fairgrounds Trails, more like the Eska Trail, if you've been out there. You know, a natural, filled in some places, there's not a lot of water down there, so we don't need to do a lot of, what do you call it, wood chips and stuff, but I don't think it's going to look like the Fairgrounds Trails. That's way above and beyond.
Well, I can go from, yeah. We can go from P Ridge all the way downtown, walk on the sidewalk or road trail, and I don't have to walk on 17, which I hate.
Right now, I have to walk on 17 till I get to Nicholson Hill.
This, this vote, by the way, doesn't represent a reluctance, extension of authority. It really is given in a trust that you guys are just doing a great job.
Just do it.
And we think it's a good idea.
Amen.
So with that, we will now vote on the main motion. So all in favor. Okay, so we're all set. We'll now move on to the next item, unless there's any kumbaya sayings on that particular...
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, they've, they've been great to work with.
Yes.
Eric wanted to recognize that you've been excellent to work with on...
Yay!
Everybody but Bob, he said.
Trails.
It's a big part of the town. Everybody loves it.
Thank you. We'll move on now to discuss the status of, just check something here, what time we're supposed to end? 8:15? We're good. Discuss the status of repairs to the library roof. So, Eric and Anna, please.
And Ralph.
Eric, it's all yours.
All right, so I'll...
Don't shoot the messenger.
Yeah, right. So we did have the, the bid opening at the last Select Board's meeting, and some discussion about the fact that the bid was more than, just about exactly twice the engineer's estimate. The direction was given that I should go back and try to figure out what, what the discrepancy might be and get more information on, on their numbers for the apparent low bidder, which was H.G. Callahan. I did talk with our engineer, who suggested that, they couldn't figure out where the number was coming from. And so we said, well, we'll go to the H.G. Callahan and ask them the same question. And they did provide some information, although we avoided getting into great detail because of the likelihood that we would be pulling this back and putting it out to bid again, or changing the scope of the project potentially. So we didn't want to get all their information and then, and then walk off. So we had a kind of a high-level discussion of, well, how far can we get at looking at these numbers and trying to find a, some value, and finds, if there's any way to, you know, remove some of the risk, things like that. And what we found is that we, after probably 20 minutes of discussion, found about $5,000 or $6,000 on a $131,000 project proposal, which was, was fine, but it wasn't enough, in my view, to, to satisfy the request from the board, to find a, a solution that would work with this particular bidder. So at this point, and I want to say Ralph came down with me and we had a good discussion. I appreciate his input and support on that. Following that, I did talk to the engineers one more time, and they had a few suggestions on what we might do. One of them was to combine this with the fire station project. The other was to perhaps reach out to our insurance company and see maybe if they would be willing to help us with this, given the critical nature of the, of the repairs. But they definitely did not recommend switching gears and looking at a different solution. They were firm in saying that we've already patched this thing over several decades, and it's time to do it right, and that we're just delaying the inevitable by, and perhaps putting good money after bad, by doing work that's support work on the inside as opposed to a full replacement. So I do understand that. H.G. Callahan was generous enough to also spend some time and come down and take a look again at the building, at the structure of the roof, get it back up in there, and really crawl around. And what we found was that we do have the ability to support, at least over the winter, that roof to prevent any major risk of collapse, not to remove the risk entirely, but to, to minimize it. And so they did give us a proposal for that work, labor, time, and materials, which I readily accepted to, to have a professional company come in and do that work for us, also one who may be involved with future project components, or another bid, perhaps. So we had been talking with them, so I did move ahead of that. So what we have now is a, I think, a decent position. We have in progress or in, in the works, repair to get us through the winter, and a couple of directions ahead with, with the project. And so I'm looking right now for feedback on where you'd like me to put my energy and time on this. I, I do believe that both of the suggestions from the engineer are worth pursuing. We could also put this out to bid just by itself. However, the idea of combining it with the overall project for the fire station, as it was put to the voters, doesn't have, you know, I don't think there are too many potential drawbacks to that. We could save, because we have one bidder doing work for a trust system both places, scheduling crane work, scheduling additional services. There could be value in doing it that way. It also will potentially change the scheduling and the time, and allow for a contractor to work this in, and also bring in more contractors, because it is, it would be a slightly larger project. The risks, as I see them, are that we could be making a project that's a little bit too big, and maybe shutting out some of the smaller contractors on a piece of the work that might have had some value for a smaller company. We didn't find that in the bid process the first time around, though. The other risk is that this, these things could, I won't say conflict, but when we have two sizable projects happening in the same timeframe, it could, it could extend the overall project. So that's kind of my synopsis of where we're at, and I'm just looking for, for any feedback the board might have on, on what to do next. And I guess first, Ralph, if you want to add anything?
Well, I just, I think Eric has done a really good job of... Well, uh, I just, I think Eric has done a, a really good job of, of looking at options given the significant disappointment we got when we saw, when we saw that bid number come in. I kind of have hopes that at some point, some way, we will be able to effect the trust proposal that we originally went to the voters with, because I think that is the, the best long-term solution to what we have at hand here that we have to deal with. If you, if you look at upgrading framing, uh, with the existing roof line, uh, you may gain time, but I, I don't think it gives you the best value for the taxpayers' dollars. Obviously, you have to consider it, uh, because we're faced with a, with the unpleasant reality of the fact that the bid number is just, I don't, it makes no sense to me. And I, I don't know why it is what it is. At some point, I'd like to find out why. Tying it to the fire company project, which is the way we presented it to the voters, is fine, as long as we get a good number for the fire company.
Right, you don't want, you don't want to then start.
We are, we have, we're oh-for-three in terms of project estimates. And I don't, given, given what has happened here, I don't have a lot of confidence that the fire company number is going to please us. So, uh, while I think we need to explore the, the framing option, I think probably what we ought to consider is waiting until we get that fire company number, looking at the project in aggregate, which is the way we proposed it, and then seeing whether it makes sense to go back to the voters in the next budget cycle and say, "Mea culpa, we did our best job to estimate what we thought these costs were going to be. Here, in reality, is the number." Outside of that, that way we get to do the jobs the way we want to do them and provide the best value long-term to the taxpayers. The alternative, as Eric suggests, is to bid it out to private contractors. And, and that, that might be an option, but I'm not sure we have enough available in terms of, of bid specifics to do that right now. Uh, I, I, I'm not that familiar with the process to know whether or not we have, whether we have design documents that we could hand to a, a contractor and say, "Give me a price." But I would, my preference would be to wait and see what the fire company number is. Look at the project in aggregate, see what the impact would be for a supplemental borrowing authority, or looking at, just looking to individual contractors and running the jobs ourselves. Because I, after what I've seen with Eric's skillset, I think we're capable of doing it.
I, I would like the library to get fixed in whatever manner we can get it to do for this winter.
Well, that's being done.
Good.
We are structurally shoring it up, which will give us, and I, and I believe you have snow clearing, roof clearing protocols in place as well, so that in addition to shoring it up, we're gonna be removing snow loads. So, the building will be safe and tight.
We were gonna go from shingle to metal.
Yes.
So, I'm not an engineer. Don't, don't, don't be one. I don't even play one on TV.
Stay at a Holiday Inn?
Isn't the load, the roof load itself lighter with metal versus shingle?
You're absolutely right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I'm also wondering if, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna second-guess the engineering firm when they say, um, you really want to do the structural stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I do have additional concerns that are non-structural in nature with a deteriorating roof and possible leakage and so on and so forth. So I'm wondering, you know, if we're gonna jack the thing up and do this work eventually, okay, um, what's the matter if they jack up a metal roof or they jack up a shingle roof? I mean, maybe we should do the roof part, the, the actual top of the roof as well, which, um, would aid you in snow shedding, uh, capability as well, 'cause it will self-shed to a certain extent. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's, it's a good, it's a good thought, um, and, and definitely.
Maybe it's a bad thought, Eric, you can go on with it too.
Well, no, I think, I think, I think it is. Um, the, the only concern I have is that would tie us then into the existing structure, um, and, and, um, that having to stay in place, because, you know, it, it, um, with a, with an asphalt roof, we could try again in twenty-five years. Um, with the metal roof, um, without, you know, a, a significant investment, uh, you know, we, we would be tied to that structure for another fifty to a hundred years. Which is one reason you go with a metal roof. Um, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to the engineer about that, um, and see what they think, um, if, if that lightening of a load, um, might be enough to, to give, um, you know, enough life to make it worthwhile, um, or enough safety. Uh, and, and I appreciate the comments that, that Ralph made about, um, maintenance involvement, because we did, uh, and have brought them in, uh, pretty actively with this. Um, they will be doing stone removal, um, very, um, at, at least on that, um, the side that has the, um, the defect, uh, that, that triggered all of this. But I'm hoping we can also get some of the, the, you know, low-hanging fruit on the other sides, uh, get the bottom six feet just to help with the, the melting process and all of that. But, um, they have, um, been up doing investigations. Um, I was up there with the, uh, H.E. Callahan folks, uh, and we've been looking for, uh, leaks and water damage. And, um, we found one spot, uh, near the chimney, uh, towards the middle of the building, uh, where there's a small, maybe two-inch, three-inch circle of, of like, white mold. Um, and it could be a dead mouse or it could be a water leak, we're not entirely sure. But, um, anyway, there was a spot there. Uh, but other than that, we haven't seen really any, uh, signs of, of major, uh, or even minor leaking, uh, with this cellulose insulation that is blanketed and everything. Uh, long story short, um, I'm making sure that maintenance is involved in the regular inspection of this to make sure that if we do have something happen, we're able to address it quickly, uh, and to verify some of the concerns about the, the condition of the shingles. Um, if we saw major, major issues up there, um, I will be recommending something different right now. We'd be up there probably with a tarp or something, but, uh, or, or a metal roof. But, um, anyway, maintenance has a, has a role in this, and, um, and I, I will bring that suggestion to the, to the engineer about, um, looking at the, um, the possibility of doing jacking and support, and also perhaps the, the metal sheeting. Um, so not, not an easy one in, in any event, um, but we're doing what we can.
I don't imagine the insurance company's gonna participate.
I can't imagine that either.
Yeah, no, um, we had that discussion about that, and I said, you know, my, my porch on my house, I found out the, the pillars were rotten and there was nothing underneath it and it's curling, and they said, "Well, when it collapses, give us a call." It wasn't quite that direct, but that's essentially what they said.
That's basically what they said.
Yeah, um, and I don't know if MMA might be a different partner, um, especially if we said, "Hey, we've got half the money ready to go, uh, and our engineer has real concerns about this." Um, I am gonna pursue that option and just have a.
I think the due diligence of writing the letter is fine.
Have a cursory look.
But I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Not likely, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, when do we bid out the, um, fire station?
That's gonna be going out, uh, we should have, um, hundred percent plan documents by the end of this week for the fire station, uh, and that will be ready to go out to bid, uh, within a week or two. Uh, we will need to just confirm the schedule, uh, put together, uh, probably a three-to-four-page cover document, and the, um, the plans that we're working with, uh, we're not gonna have a, a formal, um, you know, thirty-five, forty-page engineering RFP. We're going to have, uh, detailed plans with detailed plan notes. Uh, so it'll be a little bit different than, than some of the other projects you've seen, but certainly satisfactory, uh, and, uh, and able to communicate all the information that a contractor needs to put the price together and get the project. It'd actually be very similar to the, to the RFP we had for the, the library. We had a cover, all the details in, in, uh, three or four pages of the plans. The fire station would be much more involved, they'll probably have twelve or fifteen pages of plans.
How many bidders did we have?
We had just two for the library, uh, and that was part of the disappointment. Um, and it's hard to sa- say if, if that's contributed to the cost. We, we won't, we, we discussed this a lot, uh, and they know they were in a competitive bidding situation. We had a high bid that we could tell was just, uh, you know, here's the dart, there's the wall.
Let's see if we get it.
Um, uh, and, but, but H.E. Callahan, uh, is a respected, responsible company. Uh, and I think that their prices is probably somewhat reflective of the market, but, because they, they were in a competitive bid situation, they knew it. Um, so, it's, it's really hard to tell, and, uh, I'm getting a little bit of, of, I guess, mixed signals from the engineers. Uh, some, some saying, "Well, we don't understand this, they're overcharging," but also saying, "Well, you know, the market's really hot, it's kinda tight, uh, and people might be, um, um, just really busy and the labor costs are up." Those things are related, I think, but, um, nothing I've seen really gets us to that number, I'm in the same place where Ralph is.
I could understand maybe a, a fifteen percent variable.
Yeah.
In the engineering estimate.
Would there be any value to putting, um, the fire station out and a combined project out at the same time?
Yes.
Saying you can bid on A or B?
Or A and B.
Above.
Um, and, and that's actually what was recommended, and I think it makes sense to have, if we do go that route, to not have it as a combined project as, you know, uh, one big bucket, but to have two buckets, um, the library bucket and the fire station bucket.
A very clever cover that says, "Obviously, we would expect certain efficiencies out of the combined project."
Yes, yep, uh, some language like that, um, with a clear underst- expectation and explanation that, um, take one, take both, um, we're okay, we just want to get this out and get the work done and, um, uh, explain that, you know, the timeframes are not connected, the, um, separate but equal, I don't know how to put it, but, um.
For the sake of time, do we know then, Eric, like, do you have an idea of how we are going to resolve this issue?
Um, I, I've got a few ideas, and I think, um, Ralph's, uh, been good about thinking about some of the worst-case scenarios, which is more money. But yeah, I think we've got a clear direction on, on how to proceed and, and in what order to make this happen. Um, the suggestion and the discussion around, um, the combined bid being a, a real option for us gives me some good direction, and I'll probably pursue that, uh, as a priority, uh, in addition to the insurance company, um.
Is there anything we need to vote on, or?
No, there's nothing we need to vote on, and, and I'm glad you, you actually interjected. Uh, so I think we've given some feedback, uh, had some thoughts, uh, about it. Now we also have communicated, uh, to the public about it, so, uh, if there's somebody out there who also has an idea, we'll just take that as well. Um, I guess it's fair to say, project management will be probably on every agenda going forward for a while, and so we'll. This is not done.
This will be a standing item, and, uh, yeah.
So, we'll move on now to consider increasing agent fees for motor vehicle registrations. Twenty zero thirty-three, in your packet is, um, a letter, and Eric is gonna explain, uh, what we're allowed to do and why we want to do it.
Yeah, uh, face value on this one. Uh, very briefly, uh, these fees have been the same for twenty-plus years, probably, uh, and they're controlled by the state, and the state finally said, "You're allowed to increase them, um, to perhaps partially reflect inflation." Uh, and, and here we are with the opportunity to increase, uh, from three to five and from four to six for registrations, and I, I hope we can do that.
Do you need a motion to do that?
Yes, please.
I move that we increase the fees for vehicles, motor vehicle registration, from three to five, and for renewals from four to six for new registrations.
I second that.
Okay, and this allows us to really capture some of our clerical expense and handling expenses and so forth, and, um, it's, uh, a minor two-dollar amount, every dollar counts, but, um, on the other hand, um, it's fair to the town to have, uh, that portion.
And that increase is all coming to the town?
Yes.
Right.
These are agent fees that we keep.
Right, and so, um, and it's actually broken out on your registration, I believe.
And this has been in place since when?
Oh, boy, um.
The last century.
Yeah, at least twenty years, it's been a very long time.
I mean, it's been a huge twenty years or so.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. I did wanna address one other thing. We won't withdraw the motion, 'cause we voted on it, but, um, I generally like to do something of, uh, a fee increase with some sort of notice of like thirty days, Eric.
Yes.
Could you simply agree that we do this starting thirty days rather than immediately, so that we can put it on the website or something of that nature? And, uh, that's me talking, so if somebody disagrees with that, they should say something.
So administratively, we could make this effective November first?
That would be my suggestion, yeah.
Sounds good.
Good. Let's move on then.
Yes.
To consider a special event license, uh, for liquor license, excuse me, for Kent's Hill School. Uh, we do not have a public hearing on that. Um, this is a, uh, basically a repeat event that's happened a number of times.
I move to approve the, uh, liquor license for Kent's Hill School. The special event liquor license for the Kent's Hill School.
For a one-time event, one ten twenty-five. Um, is there, and it's been moved in second. Okay, is there any discussion on that? All in favor, thank you. We'll move on next to, uh, consider applying for an LED lighting grant through Efficiency Main. So, Eric, do you wanna bring in some money and, and also, um, help us save some money in the long run here?
Yes, uh, so, um, with grants, typically this would be a small enough dollar value that we would just, um, um, go ahead and get it done, but, um, we are looking at this as a, as a good opportunity to do those things that Bruce described, uh, save some money, um, get some money from, um, the state, but also, um, or the state and the Nature Conservancy, but also, um, um, would require an expenditure on the part of the town, uh, full, full amount upfront and then a reimbursement seventy-five percent. So, um, to me, this is a tremendous value. Uh, we would be looking at, um, just this building, uh, and mostly the, the downstairs and a few accessory lighting fixtures, so, um, I don't believe the total cost would, would, would exceed more than a few thousand dollars. Um, you know, maybe getting up to five, but, uh, I think it would be a very wise thing for us to do. We do have, uh, several, um, uh, potential sources in operating and in capital, uh, that we could use, uh, to, um, to cover the cost of a project of this size. So, uh, I'm hoping to get a green light to move ahead with this grant application.
Do you just need an authorization for you to pursue this?
Yes, um, because there will be an expenditure on behalf of the town.
And it's an application for an outside grant, so I think.
Then I would make a motion to, uh, for the, for the Select Board to give authority to, uh, the town manager to pursue the Efficiency Main LED lighting grant.
Second.
And that's understood to be with the associated spending that qualifies you for the grant.
Right.
Now, this, this is, again, a Nature Conservancy funding, is the funding source?
Uh, primarily it's Efficiency Main, um, however, uh, the Nature Conservancy is offering a match.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's, uh, that's why we get the seventy-five percent.
Yeah, it's fifty percent, um, and then twenty-five.
Oh.
So it's, uh.
So by winning one, you get the other automatically?
Yes, yeah, which would be pre-approved, um, and the budget.
So the Nature Conservancy won't run out of money?
Uh, it's, it's a limited, uh, pool and, uh, applications, um, are competitive, so there's a chance we might not get this. If that's the case, um, I'd probably bring the project to the board anyway, um, to have you consider, um, doing at, at our own expense because it is a, a value-added proposal. This is just a little bit of icing on, on the cake, so, or a lot of icing.
Right, so if we didn't perform to win the grant, then we would obviously step back and take a look at it.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, so we do have that motion on the floor. Um, is there any further discussion on, um, on the motion that has been made, uh, to apply for that grant and the association funding? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, twenty zero thirty-six, in your package, you read the two thousand eighteen outline for the, um, evaluation of, of the town manager, Eric. And, uh, so typically at this time of year, uh, we do that, and, uh, basically I'm just using this opportunity to notify the public that we're, that we'll be doing our annual evaluation of Eric. Uh, there is, uh, participation in that from employees, from outside. There is participation in that from employees, from outside contractors that we have normal dealings with, from different volunteers in town and from the public. And unless, in reading that, you saw anything that needed to be changed, we do try to keep our evaluation fairly consistent in terms of, from year to year, of the evaluating the same thing. We don't need a motion or anything in this, but it's sort of just notice that I'll, I'll trigger that process, and so...
You're going to divvy up who's doing what?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
I'll try to do that with some advanced phone calls so nobody gets a surprise. How's that sound?
That sounds great.
Okay. Great.
I'm changing my phone number.
Don't dare. Consider a revised operations manual for the Reed Field Transfer Station. That's 20037. In your packet was the...
That is some document.
It was a document. My, unfortunately, we don't have Catherine here tonight, but I believe she's had major review of this or participation in building it.
Absolutely. And a leadership role in making sure it happens.
And always, in a leadership role in getting it done.
Yeah.
So we approve this for what reason?
Because our...
You did explain that.
Yes, I did. I'll just recap. The ordinance says that operational rules and guidelines need to be approved by the Select Board. This very much fits into that category. However, I think as with many other projects, the board has delegated a lot of that responsibility to the transfer station manager and the appropriate committee, being the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, and they have been reviewing this. We've had two to three reviews on it, a lot of input, and that committee has been tremendous in helping guide this document. It essentially, it fits in with the operations man, with the, with the ordinance. It's really the executive document that describes operations at the facility. The document we had prior, or that we currently have until it's replaced, had not been updated since probably 20, again, 25 years ago. It was, it was at least before we had recycling compaction equipment. I'll put it this way, it was done on a typewriter, and it's been a very long time.
Had the D's filled in and stuff like that?
It, it was, it was old and it did not reflect anywhere as close to our current operations. So it was a five-page document. It did its job for a long time. However, this is based on a model that came from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection and reflects very intensely the needs and particular nuances of our own facility. That being said, the operations manual, again, is an executive document. We have several hundred, probably 200, 300 pages of supplemental appendices that really are the, are the, the detail of all of this and the detail of the operations from contracts for haulers to universal waste disposal policies from the state of Maine. All of those things are in the appendix. Some of them are brought forward into the document, but it really is something that has been vetted and will be reviewed one more time following Select Board approval, I, I hope, at the meeting on the, I want to say the 15th, but I'm not sure that's right, next Wednesday.
That would be the 16th.
The 16th, the 16th.
So could it come back because there's additional revisions?
No, I wouldn't think it would. Again, so this is a living document. When we sat down with staff and went over some of the details, we made changes. The appendices will change on a yearly basis. So the, our, our ordinance says that these, this document is reviewed every year. So we've been remiss for the past however many years in doing that, and so I expect that as this gains traction, we're working with a much more workable version, that we will be reviewing this annually and we'll just catalog changes over the year, and those will be brought in during the, during the next, the next cycle. So it'll be a regular occurrence, I hope.
Great, I'm ready to take a motion.
I move that we accept the new, it's called here.
Operations manual for the Reed Field Transfer Station.
Operation manual.
And...
As submitted.
And when, when you say accept, you really mean approve, right?
Approve.
Yeah. Okay. Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So now do we have discussion on this?
Just question as to how the other member towns have had a part in this and whether there's comfortable unanimity in terms of acceptance of this document.
I think I can begin the answer to that, but I'm going to let Eric then dot the i's on my answer.
Sure, go ahead.
And the, is, is physically, there are customers.
Okay.
And we're responsible with our employees, and they do pay, obviously, to participate and so forth, but I've heard nothing but good things from the two customers, which are...
So they don't have actual input into the formulation of this document?
They, they wouldn't approve it at their Select Board meeting. However, the Solid Waste Committee has representatives from those towns sitting, sitting there.
So that's where the input comes from?
So that's, so we do have their input and we absolutely value it, but ultimately, we do the approval because we, we're the responsible employer of, of the staff there, the land provider, if you will, and so forth.
Yeah. Well, that's absolutely right, and I do want to thank the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee again for their input and Catherine especially for her role in making sure that this happened and helping to, helping to shape it, so.
Great. The motion's still out there, or is there any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Does anybody want to make a further motion of considering the night's activities?
I'd like to move to adjourn.
I looked right at you.
Is that the motion you were looking for?
That's the motion I was looking for.
I would second that.
So it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? Thank you, we're done it, so, eight steps.